Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the BFUHS School Board Meeting.
All right, good evening, everybody. Time is 6:00 PM on October 23rd. Welcome everybody for today's special board meeting for some [inaudible 00:35:35].
United States of America and the public for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I skip.
All right, we could do introductions. Deb, I'm gonna go to you first on Zoom land.
Sure, I'm just trying to stay bandwidth. This is Deborah Wright. I represent Rockingham on the Bells Falls Union High School.
David?
David.
Me? Oh, thank you. David Clark representing Westminster on the Union High School Board.
I'm trying to noise represent Athens.
Lex Stack representing Rockingham.
June Streeter representing Westminster.
Jason Terry representing Rockingham.
Andy Haas superintendent.
Kelly Ryan principal.
Rob Altz representing Rockingham. And noted absent is Darcy Sprague and Jamie Sturridge. And for so labor. So we just started the introductions and you're ready to sign and introduce yourself.
So six of them. It's just me by surprise. For still a lamb, I'm representing Rockingham.
Thank you. So welcome. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? And none? Any communication and public comment out there? Anybody in Zoom like to participate? All right, same number, move on. So first up, we had to review and approve board minutes for July 18th and October 11th. Again, a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept as written the minutes for July 18th and October 11th.
Right. Deb, how do you vote?
I would, I would like to vote aye, although I think there's some stuff missing on October 11th. But okay, aye.
David?
Yes.
Yeah.
What?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And so.
Yes, and I want to commend Darcy on getting the [inaudible 00:39:01] July 1 out.
That was very, very good of her. And I don't, I'm not sure. We missed morning than nine 28 minutes. So we'll get them on the next agenda. So thank you, everybody, for getting those brought up. And thank you, Tara, for what you're doing.
The jury for what they say is the right decision.
There's no doubt in my mind that the defendant would have.
Okay. So we have some new business for discussion. Principal update. Kelly, I know it's been a short, like, week or two days. Do you have any new things? Anything?
Sure, just to provide a few quick informal updates. One is the testing was completed as planned last Monday, Tuesday. So again, that was for the D wing to assess the recalibration of the machines, to assess the C wing, just to assess how that initial carbon filtration unit deployment is going, and then to retest the gym in auditorium, including some of those peripheral spaces, right? See if we can reopen that in the near future. So that was great. We also had the scientists, the research team from University of Iowa came Friday. They arrived late Friday afternoon with the Department of Evan Hamilton came down from the Department of Environmental Conservation with them. And it was actually really interesting to do that two-hour walkthrough with that team and kind of get a close-up of some of the materials and spaces that they were really honing in on as part of that, the sort of initial source investigation work. So spent a lot of time in the nooks and crannies, the maintenance rooms, talked to Jim in particular, looking at the beams in the gym, looking at the adhesive under the carpet here. And was just really getting a richer sense of where some of that source investigation work was. But I know. Again, that these units will be deployed for about a month. And then Evan from the DEC will be picking up those units and shipping them back for that team to begin their work. They're, they were super, super accessible team. They're also really eager to connect with some of our science classes. And I know the scientific program was really interested in collaborating and posting an opportunity for those researchers, especially the student researchers, to speak about some of the work that they're doing and some of the things that the students are seeing in the building, which I think will be a really nice opportunity. So we'll get that set up in the next month or so. In my next principal's report, I'll include this document and some more language around it, but just naming the VSAC, so the Vermont Student Assistance, I think I'm getting it right. Vermont Student Assistance Corporation works with a lot of our students here in the building and throughout the state of Vermont, post-secondary planning, post-secondary access. They actually, just to my knowledge, just late last week, provided something called a senior survey. They had outreach to ask about their ability to implement the survey tool. They do it, I guess, every other year here in the building. So they were outreach about this spring and the ability to come back into the building. And through the, that conversation, they're like, hey, do you want your 2022 data? I said, I would love that, right? So I think it just sheds some additional data points that I think will be helpful to next conversations about how our seniors think about their post-secondary planning. So again, I'll include that in the next quarter report. There's lots of work pulling the proficiencies and things like that from power school in advance of our budget meeting game on Thursday. So busy controlling the nooks and crannies of our, of our spaces for all of the information. So other than that, busy, but good.
If, no, any questions for Kelly? Great, thank you for providing all that feedback and thank you. Appreciate it. Just a reminder that we need to get a budget agenda in Mr. Clark so we can get that more proper. So next up, we have Buildings and Grounds update. Possible action needed. First, I asked Mr. Streeter to come and kind of fill us in on what needs to be done as far as an emergency plan. I know this school, back in the day, was a place to come when Vermont Yankee, you know, was alive and well. And it was a, you know, a shelter, basically. Just in case there's a disaster or, you know, the way the world is, I mean, who knows what's gonna happen, right? So I asked Mr. Streeter to come and kind of fill us in on what, what, what would happen and what, if you need anything from us.
Sure. Thank you. I'm Cole Streeter, the Westminster Fire Chief. So this book is set up for Reception Center Plan. This is 2014. Like, everything in here talks about how the school will be run, what would happen. It was designed for emergency, an emergency at Vermont Yankee. The towns of Brownboro, Halifax, Vernon, Gilbert, Demerstine were all going to be coming here or at least wherever it would. And it goes through, this covers everything that you could possibly think of. Animal control, of course, that was back when you had to worry about the radiation. So you had monitoring, you had vehicle decontamination and special places for contaminated vehicles. You have personnel monitoring and possible decontamination, registration, reunification. Red Cross was a big part of it. So, yeah, so and they were all to come here, schools were gonna come here. But of course, a lot of people might not, but it was designed to run and house people for a short period of time, and then they would be sent off to come airways. And then, like I said, there's of course spells everything.
Like, is that your book? Is that a copy?
That is, that's a copy. And I'm sure that we could come up with some more because they don't do anything with that anymore. So, yeah, that somebody could go through and pick out the things that need to be done. And there's quite a lot that doesn't necessarily need to be done. It's hopefully we act together with. Be more, I would assume, naturally, sadly. Yeah.
No, thank you. It's been taking half. I didn't realize all the towns would be, so Halifax, Demerstine, what the other towns?
Let's see. It is Brownboro, Demerstine, Gilbert, Halifax, and Marlboro.
My only question would be, does, we need to get Rockingham involved? It's not like Sean McGinnis or anything like that, or?
Yeah, the volunteers that staffed the high school were from all over the area. So absolutely. And we picked from wherever we could get.
Yes. And there's something, that's why I promise, if that happened, you would need a guy in charge, right? How does that work?
I mean, we, we have an emergency management director, but this spells out who is in every position.
Yeah.
Got it. So correct me if I'm wrong, but like in incident command, depending on the situation that's happening, different agencies as they come in might take over and control.
Yeah, you would probably have an overall incident commander, but yes. Yep. Yeah, if it's, you know, a fire or something like that, you might have more in the first aid area. Yeah. Flooding, you may have, you know, more in having to take care of people that don't have anything in there.
So if the federal government were involved, they might come in and have to do so. I know, I understand what I just said, but I, I mean, but that's kind of depending on the disaster, I guess.
Yes, right. What type of emergency, yeah. And how many people are you looking at evacuating? You know, is it a real larger area or is it, you know, a small area in Athens or whatever? Somebody with a head of severe flood or? Instead of power outage, but any questions for Streeter?
David?
Yeah, Paul. Yes. We're, of course, at this point dealing in theoreticals, but the last time we were in the room dealing in theoreticals, Stephen Major, when he was a member of this board, raised a very interesting question. If you had that theoretical, really big event in February with three pieces of snow on Hadley Field, and this is rhetorical only right now, but how would we handle what theoretically might be a very large parking problem?
This does spell it out, but they do have contractors to come in and plow.
Okay.
Yeah. The town, when we had a town meeting one year, the town gave in and had the parking lot cleared in half an hour. But yes, so it is, and it's spelled out.
Wonderful.
If the driveway happened to be inaccessible, it's in there.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah. That was very.
Good job. Hope to see you again in ten years.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'll get a copy. Yeah, I'll, I'll get another copy and get it up to you. And I'm, I'm sure there are all sorts of them. Yes. We're finding them in some places. That's right. What, what year did you say that was? This, this was 2014, this copy. Yeah. So that, that's more of a major disaster as opposed to an emergency operations plan that we have, we have for our, for our local school. Yeah, I don't know when they stuck with the plan at Vermont Yankee. Oh, is that right? Well, yeah. Six of theirs here. And they used to re, we had to be reevaluated, was it every three years? And they would come right in, the federal government would come in, the state would come in. We got to set everything up and they would create people through and do the monitoring and, yeah. Yeah.
That's a question.
Okay, just one. Don't leave the ball. It's like, gee, don't mess up.
Our gym is offline currently, right? And I imagine that that space is.
Yes, that was a huge area.
Yeah, so until that comes back online, how does that influence our ability to be of support?
Right. The, the gym was really the area that they would bring most everyone into and be monitored because of course they would have to be monitored. And then they, if they were clean, they would just go right through. And there are all sorts of different areas in the school. The house door and whatever they had to do with them. Yeah, yeah. Everybody would be registered. So because you're not having to monitor necessarily everyone that. That's okay.
Okay, very much. All right, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Reason why I asked all the [inaudible 00:39:53]. We're also just about set up for the generator to be 100%. And Kelly and Dr. [inaudible 00:42:03] working on that as well for the Building and Grounds Committee. So, you know, just, I think it's always good to be prepared instead of reacting, reaction all the time. So we just want to have that. So.
Care for the worst, do the best.
Right. So under building the grounds also, Andy, can I provide an update on where we're at? Like the HVAC or? Or I have some of the notes from the building grounds. Kind of over, but. So it asks Mr. Horton to kind of give an update just because it's been involved in it. So. So bids are due back by the end of October. And then when we have those bids back, we'll be coming to this board with those bids and be looking for a motion to allow us to expend federal funds in your building. That could be the next big piece because we will need that as we push up for project approval on the HVAC system. So as soon as those bids come in, we'll bring them here and be looking for a motion on that. And a lot of the beginning dates as far as when we might be able to start doing work is something we have to coordinate with DEC and our consultants as far as the work they're doing on the PCVs. The roof replacement project is, these are in the order of what he believes, the way we're handling them. Should follow the HVAC project. Says there were numerous move openings to be constructed, the new roof units. The roof project depended on the HVAC project timing, which depended on the PCB outcome. So we can see the chain of events there. But they are working on putting bid packages together so we can bring those in. Currently, you all held off moving forward with a bond for the, the roof project. The next opening for that is coming up December, January-ish. So I'll be working with, just with Azena to come back to you, Paul, to authorize us to go back out and pick that up because hopefully we'll try and do that this coming summer. The driveway and the parking lot. Right now, we're in the design phase, so there's, there's a piece that has begun way, way ahead of time. Anticipate bidding in early 2024. And the work is planned, we conduct it starting in the spring of 2024 for the parking areas right through the summer of 2024. Again, trying to minimize the disruption that we might have to the entire campus. Obviously, it's going to be a challenge after trying to work around that because we're trying to run way in, run way out. So that'll be a piece. The cattiscore replacements. Excuse me. Oh, by the way, we don't have, we did not go out the, we need to go out for the bond on the driveway as well. So that will be, again, another piece in January or December, January. We'll have a couple in the bond. It's just to go out for those bids. The cattiscore replacement. We're presently got out there looking for bid. Bids are due November 7th. And the work there, we're looking to do is in the summer of 2024. And so the surface material there is, I talked to one of the vendors that the temperatures have to be right. So it's like, okay, you gotta have a nice week of no rain, heat, you know, or you gotta have heat. Can't have rain in the forecast and stuff like that. So that's really kind of important as well. So if, to move to the plumbing. So, so recently this year, we've had two plumbing issues here in the building where we've had backups. One was in the back shop area. The area of transportation was using as a work area. Then when the PCVs came in, we had to switch the boys athletics over there. So we had a backup and sewer there. And then just as school kind of started, we had a backup that came out of one of the bathrooms in the hallway with water and sewage coming out into the hallway. Both of those seem to be due to the makeup of the pipes. The one in the bathroom that came out in the hallway, there were some wet wipes that were used. Nothing, nothing recent according to Jeff. It was something that then used over time. Some of those have just both, you know, maybe degrade, some don't. But because of the type of pipe, things get corroded and get stuck and that's what caused it. I think we're going to need to look into, are those pipes under the slab? If you don't have a basement here, you have a slab. Do those pipes run under the slab or do they run through the slab? And it's fixing both expensive. And I own, I don't know how priced that, I talked to another student that had a similar problem. Their issue was their pipe was going through their slab. So they couldn't just get in there, get at the jacket, camera for the entire slab, basically. But it may be an issue that we're gonna have to look in and address. You know, the recommendation from Jeff, and I don't disagree with him, is to get someone out here and, you know, show a camera down there and kind of get some pictures of what's going on. We'll discuss things. Thank you. We asked, because we have a lot to do, so we asked Kelly to give us a priority list, like a five-year list of like importance. And then, and then we can, you know, sometimes it feels like we're just shooting darts at a dartboard and trying to fix things, but if we make a list of priorities so we can kind of punch them out, that would be great. You're gonna have it to us by the first day in November, that right. And it's much like that. Any questions? I would, Kelly, please.
Um, I had heard a little bit of scuttlebutt about the roof replacement project. If the PCVs are actually in the roofing material, the paint, would that be covered by a reimbursable? And we wouldn't have to go for a bond? And when will we know that?
So I have to get back to you on a full speculate, on full, like a full answer, but there is some, then some speculation that the PCVs may be in the paint that is in the roof deck, not the other side, well, on our side of the roof deck. Meaning the, not on the outside, but I mean. There's a couple of different ways that if it were in there that they, they told us that they could address that issue. One of the ways is come in and kind of say and blast it all off. The other way is the roof deck. So I think we've got to do some source testing before we can even have that knowledge of it. But, you know. Could it be reimbursable? I guess I'd have to ask that question. So I would want to, but it sounds like it could be in the realm of it. But, you know, just a reminder that there's only $13 million out there.
Until January, January.
And if, if. If on the Montpelier, they put more money aside, then that would be fine. But, you know, we, we don't know that piece of it, so.
My other question is, when you and Jim start looking at the bonds, can you look at local bonds as well as federal bonds? So little birdie told me they might be, we might be better off doing a local bond and then we wouldn't be thrown in with all these other, maybe non-functioning.
Sure, we'll come back with, you know, compare.
Thank you.
Simon, do you have any questions?
No.
Brazil?
Yeah, and to follow up on James, I was listening to the radio on the way in and the state is, and governor are talking about doing a fund where they address disasters and all kinds of type things and that. And I'm thinking that possibly the PCB issue may end up being funded through some of that. So that might be something that's coming up as well and something to keep an ear out on.
You, you have heard nothing about that.
Yeah, it was just on the radio. I don't know any more than what I just heard. That's it. But just listening and finding out might be good.
Any other questions? David?
Yeah. Somewhat deep dive in the minutes and agendas for the last year and a half over the weekend. And I was very curious about some of these large projects because when your spending gets up into the millions, I believe that we have an obligation to obtain what are known as bid specs, which are an engineer's parameters for what the project should entail. And then that informs contractors as to what the scope of the job is and allows contractors to provide us with an estimate or, if it helps, possibly even to quote. Okay. I do recall that when we had our very lengthy discussion about the HVAC report that came back in April of 2021, that the Buildings and Grounds Committee finally prevailed upon this board to go back to the engineer that drafted that report and the engineering and have them draw bid specs. Okay, I'm all right with that. I am not aware that any bid specs or any, any sign-off from this board to seek a proposal for bid specs has taken place so far with the roof replacement. I would like to stand corrected on that if that's not accurate. But you cannot intuit the status of those bid specs lack thereof from the minutes which are available in 2022. It's got a little bit better in 2023 because at least they started committee meeting minutes, right? Nothing in 2023 that would cover roof bid specs. So passing it back to administration is to whether that step is actually been undertaken yet to seek from this board permission to go out to receive bids to produce bid specs, which then leads to bids from contractors for the roof. I believe that we've hired an engineer in Brownboro, heaven help me, I can't remember his name, but they're the firm that rebuilt the Brooks House after they fired down there about 10 years ago.
Steven and Associates.
Like, what's that, June?
Steven and Associates.
Stevens and Associates, thank you so much. And I believe that Stevens was asked to produce bid specs for the driveway, another unsearchable, unfortunately, on the WNESU website. I think that, I believe the tennis courts are under, at $30,000 roughly, under the limit where we might need to entertain bid specs. But I'm uncertain as to what the scope of the. Of the, uh, science, uh, area project is because I did. Uh, read through your notes, Kelly, over the weekend, but, uh, couldn't. Uh, seem to find any numbers attached to that, so I want to bring that to the board's attention. It's again depending upon the size of that project, that's a step. That we, I believe, will need to go through in order to move, um, expeditiously. Towards, um, addressing the science area, so, um. I'm gonna try to boil it down to two things. One is that, um, past actions of this board. And its Buildings and Grounds Committee, um, should be searchable. Some way, somehow, um, I would hope ideally through the WNESU website. Um, I am asking for confirmation as to where exactly we stand in the. Uh, process in terms of creating or already having created. Bid specs for the roof, because if we haven't, I think we need to get after that sooner rather than later, and, um. That roughly sums me up on, uh, Buildings and Grounds, except to say that these things are important. Because when we're talking about spending millions of dollars potentially on infrastructure. I think we need to be able to wrap a price tag around just how many millions we're talking about, so we have some idea of how. We're gonna fund it. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, David. Do you want to respond in here?
So David, that's why I said at the beginning, we're, we're in the process of getting those bids right now, so we. That's what Steve, um, Portman is working on right now, getting bids. We don't have a number on those. If we were given speculation costs, uh, by the previous administration on some of those different projects. So, uh, we had, uh, the board had, um, my knowledge given us, um. Had asked us to go forward to, to look into those, and, you know, when we're. Talking about like a project that's doing in the summer, we have to start working ahead of time, and so, but. Steve Portman is currently working on those bid specs right now.
Okay, and what I'm, what I'm asking for, I want to be very clear about this, I want to be absolutely certain. That this board is aware of what those bid specs actually are, um, who has created them and when. Um, based on those bid specs, we will go out to bid for these projects.
I will, I will double check with Steve Portman.
Thank you.
Um, David, to answer your, uh, question, we, we have been, uh. Most recently, um, at all the committees, they are giving notes and are available on the websites, uh.
Oh, two thousand twenty-three, it's wonderful, two thousand twenty-two ain't nothing there for committee, uh, agendas or minutes.
And then it happened. So, uh, next up, uh, is there any other questions on Building and Grounds?
Um, so next up, um, we have a summary of Bell's Falls High School. For six-month commitment to listen to all stakeholders around portrait of a graduate. If you seek guidance from the community both internally and externally, uh, there's no action on this, um. So what I was hoping to do is, um, Mike, you did a, a lot of the heavy lifting for this, so what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is just kind of go through. Take your time, we have plenty of time, we got all night, whatever you want to do, um, go through like a page at a time, like go through the page and then.
Sure.
See if there's any questions and then kind of keep going.
Sure, there's a lot of data here, we won't go through the whole thing, but go ahead, go ahead.
No, I don't have a question, give me a minute.
Yeah.
So Amy's gonna make sure that's up for, uh, fact, so he's like.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll be your bandit.
All right, I'll just holler and switch, well, switch, so, um, you know. This started, this listening tour started five months ago and. I'm looking at Kelly because that feels like a million years ago, but here we are, we have the summary of, of this process, so. That's what's happening today is we're bringing that information to the board, so it's, yeah, you're on the first page and that's where we'll start. So the bottom line was, the objective of this listening tour was to collect input from the community, a diverse. Uh, set of inputs from. Community members, and we were really asking questions that were very high level. Um, questions, as you can see here, highlighted in yellow, are we meeting all the academic needs of our students? Is our curriculum appropriate for today's job market? And the objective was to collect this input and bring it back to the administration in this forum. Share that with them to support their efforts to drive better results for students. Now, it's important to acknowledge that there was no role confusion in this process. The administration develops and implements the curriculum, uh, that's not the board's responsibility, but. The board's job really is to ask questions, um, and then eventually approve the curriculum that Kevin come up with. The other thing to note is, the listening tour, this process was never a part of the budget process. So sometimes it's easy to have those things fade into each other, but. One is a very high level of discussion, one is a process discussion, this was not part of the budget process. Andy just went, switched to the other, so how did we go about this? We, we had a diverse series of. But eight speakers that came in, I see actually one of them in the room tonight, Andrew Jumpfire, who was one of our students that came in. We brought in, uh, a collection of, uh, diverse speakers, students, business leaders, Casey Cota was here. Uh, we brought in, uh, administration from the tech centers. And most importantly, we brought in folks from our own school, Heather Warriors, Kelly Orion, next page, please. And here's a kind of a sample of some of the comments that we received, so. Uh, Mary Warriors, uh, excuse me, Mary Wallace, one of our elite students. Was wondering, and I'm not gonna go through every single one of these comments, but she was wondering why more students weren't taking advantage. Of some of the advanced placement, uh, offerings, um. Casey Cota, you know, a local lawyer was asking, could we see more applied math and science for the graduates? Uh, we had, uh, Scott Carr, the leader up at the River Valley Tech Center. Talking about barriers to access for students that wanted to go to the tech center. Then also we had our own Heather Warriors, uh, who's responsible for, uh, job-related, uh, program here at Bell's Falls High School. Talking about connecting students', um, academics with real-world applications. Um, so that's just a collection, and these slides, by the way, are available on the website because they're connected to the agenda. So if anybody wants to, uh, uh, look, look at them, uh, more than just on, online. So, um, so we collected this data, we're bringing it to the board, so really now, it's. I believe, uh, in the next day, the, the next steps could be really more discussion. Uh, I saw Andy released, uh, some data on graduation requirements, one of the things that you mentioned in that. Was potentially, uh, pulling together a task force to look at some of these issues, which I think. I think the reality is when you, when you step back. A lot of the things that we found and that we're presenting to the board really dovetails into, excuse me, into the administration, dovetails into. What the, uh, administration is doing, um, but I myself found, you know. We need to discuss this, we need to discuss it at a public forum in front of the community, but I also, uh, as. What I would imagine, actually more, more questions came to the surface for me as, as we went through the process. So what I have here in the orange is the school's mission statement. And the second, uh, to the last line says, each student to reach full potential with the capacity. To choose from multiple pathways of success, and, and so, um. That to me is a high-level philosophic comment, but then as I start to peel things back. The questions that I had were, you know, does our process support this? Uh, adequately, the multiple pathway objectives for the students, um. Another question that I had was, and, and one of the reasons I asked that question is, we don't have a, if you will, a full-time or a. Uh, flexible pathways coordinator, we have Heather Warriors, who is working on job, uh, based, uh. Education, which is great, but, you know, the, as we heard from Kelly. The flexible pathways program is really kind of being addressed. Not necessarily hit or miss, but it's being addressed by various people, um, and I just want to make sure that. We are giving it a fair shot because it's an important piece for the hands-on all-learners. The second comment, uh, that our question that I would raise would be, you know, our graduation requirements and. One of the things that we heard from Scott Carr at the River Valley Tech Center was, he talked about barriers to access and how. He's found that, that it's not just Bell's Falls, he actually was quite complimentary of Bell's Falls, but. Uh, because of, uh, graduation requirements, some students can't get into the tech center until junior year. But for some people, it's, it's late and, you know, they're, whether it's frustration or they're, they're, you know, trying to find their purpose in life. Uh, junior year could be kind of late to be getting into that, um. Looking at, and Andrew is here, one of the things that Andrew shared with us was, not only was it a barrier to access. But it was a barrier to success for Andrew, Andrew's a hands-on learner. Uh, and to be very candid, he and his father came in and. One of the questions, one of the points that they made was that, you know, some of Andrew's hands-on learning, uh, approaches. You know, were not understood and, and perceived as a discipline issue. Subsequently, Andrew's got into the tech center and he's doing fantastic, so love to hear those success stories. And, and the reality is, I just want to make sure when we have these discussions and we ask these kind of questions. That they're not misinterpreted, um, these questions are not anti-academic. Uh, or they're not about honoring our standards or our expectations for our students. But honestly, it's about honoring learning differences, well, let's face it, there are a lot of learning differences out there. And, you know, I think that it's important that our process acknowledges that and make it as easy for. The elite students, um, or as it has for the elite students for some of the, uh, non-elite or maybe non-all-bound students. So those are my two questions and, um. There's a lot of data here, if anybody wants to go, let me throw, throw anything in the deck, happy to answer any questions. But that's probably enough for me, um, I'll turn it back to you, Jason, if you want to.
Does anybody have any questions, uh, so far, um, about, uh, any of the audience? Is anybody on Zoom? Oh, go ahead.
Can you just speak up a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have any questions about what? Anybody on Zoom up there? Right, um, so. So there's no questions so far, like you want to keep going about the state of our graduation requirements and go through the. Right, so, what's your plan?
You know, honestly, I think that, um. You know, I think, like I said, um. The, the data's here, we first, we presented it to the administration. Andy, uh, just put out his, uh, his goals and, uh, one of the goals was equitable, effective allocation of resources. But I think that's, that's the bottom line on all of this, um, so there's the equitable piece, which is the. The college-bound versus non-college-bound, I just want to make sure because, you know, when you have these conversations. Start to hear back from the community, and I think there's a misunderstanding that this process or. The discussions that we're having here are about somehow taking away from the elite students. And that could be farther from the truth, I mean, those are, are, if you will, are, you know, are academic athletes and. There, there's nothing about this, and from my perspective anyways, but that's why we should have. These discussions in, in public and in front of the community, um, that's about taking away from the students and, you know. Those students can, I think Andy said, can earn up to thirty-two credits, uh, currently in our system, um. But let's face it, there's some students in our, at our school that, um, they don't have the same objectives. Uh, in terms of going to college, and they also don't have the same learning, uh, styles. And I just want to make sure that we're, uh, taking the ban, taking care of those students also, so, um. I, I think, you know, uh, to just digress a little bit, I think that, you know, there are a few things out there and some of the data that I provided here. I think the four-year college practice paradigm, which I think our, our program, our, you know, if you will. Uh, portrait of a student or curriculum, I mean, there's a lot of terms for it. It's geared twenty-eight credits, it's kind of geared more towards that direction. But I think the reality is the world's changed, the, the, the job market's changed, uh, there's reasons that. Uh, you know, the graduation rate in colleges have essentially of the students that go to college graduate. So, um, you know, there's a lot of folks that, whether they start college and go, make it through and then with debt. There's opportunity cost of not working and going to college, and so I think that we really just have to make sure that. We're directing those students in the, in the red banner, um, and, and most importantly, uh, providing the opportunities for success. Uh, again, I keep looking at Andrew and, and I know his success story, and, you know, there's nothing, uh. More important for us, I believe, you know, as a school board than to provide that opportunity. You know, for all of our students, and that's pretty much what this is about.
Great, um, so I want to, uh, mention not just you, but all of us and all the board members and. And also Rockingham Board, uh, that showed up and all of the, uh, teachers that came and all the public that came, it was, uh. A long six months, so my question I would like to have answered, um, is, uh, what are the next steps? How do we take it from here and then it's not just wasted? You know, and I, I really want to spend a few minutes on that, what should our next steps be, uh, to finish this? And then I had questions for the administration, if you, if you folks thought it was useful, a useful tool, and how would you guys use it, so. I had those two questions, so I don't know what, I'd like the board to help me order the next steps, what are, what are the next, what's the process that we need to follow? Here.
Okay, kind of Kelly question, uh, assuming that this board, uh, feels a commitment to. Flexible pathways, what are, what are the next steps that you, the principal would like to take to. Um, address, um, moving in the direction of. Flexible pathways more effectively, what do you need from resources? Um, what, what is, what does this board need to do to help you get there?
I appreciate the question, I don't think I can answer that at a level of detail that I want yet, except to know that.
It might defy a thirty-second response.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, I would say that conversation has been started. Um, I'm looking at other school boards, right? I, I, I think I centered this in the last being that other schools. Tend to have flexible pathways coordinators, someone who is looking at those different spokes of the wheel with a really high level of intention. Not saying that that's not happening, but I think it's happening in kind of, um, bits and starts, and I think we would welcome the bandwidth, right? Uh, again, both in terms of time, but also content expertise, so there's a lot of opportunities that exist. Uh, out there, but we don't necessarily have the bandwidth to crosswalk deficiencies, right? In some of those experiences, so looking at the tech programs, looking at some of the work-based learning, some of those other service opportunities, right? Those alternative education pathways, we don't necessarily have the bandwidth to crosswalk, right? Beyond awarding an elective here or there, there might be more that we can do to support students in those experiences with a higher level of intention. Right, but we need to reflect on how can we do it within our existing resources? Or do we need more resources to be able to do that? I, I don't know yet. Um, I think one of the things we're also looking at that I think will help and it gives the flexible pathways more. Meaning for students in particular, is making some of those opportunities like the PLP process and senior project. Credit bearing, right, which I know kind of flies in the face of some of the other conversations that are happening. But I do think in looking at some of the other models at schools, that PLP process in particular, right out of the gate, I'm not even talking freshman year. I'm talking again, thinking of it along that seven, twelve, to do, right, which is what that proficiency was. Tend to get at, we gotta start sooner, start at a higher level of intention and really map it out for our students in a more concrete way. How meaningful that opportunity is to engage in that PLP process in particular. How meaningful that opportunity is to engage in that PLP process in particular. So there's a lot of different ways that students are doing it. I don't know that we've landed. I know we haven't landed as a community here in terms of what our preference is. I just know that I think folks are eager or get becoming eager. I don't know. Everyone's eager. I'm eager. I think others are getting there. Kind of dig into that conversation.
Well, a very, very brief response, Kelly. Number one. I have hopes that our work with new solutions paid well will help create some of those seven through twelve synergies. That remains to be seen. But even more immediately, there has been some discussion around the possibility of a flexible pathways bizarre. And I realize that's something that you really need to spend some time looking at. However, we are in the process at least halfway through the budget process. And if you are able to identify resources, I'm talking the long green here, Kelly. If you're able to identify the resources that you feel we are likely to need to start addressing some of those steps toward flexible pathways. We really should be hearing about that, I believe, sooner rather than later.
Anybody else? Oh, Tanya. Actually, we got a spot a little bit.
Sure.
So in, in your line of work, you have to have a lot of systems and procedures and there's a lot of checklists and stuff like that. What could you recommend for us as a board? To make sure that we're not here for years from now saying, hey, remember when we talked about that that Mike Stack thing, God rest his soul? Have you tried to put that in place here? What, what would you recommend?
Well, I, I knew my place of work. Well, for me, for learning, I am a very hands on learner and I'm a director of a laboratory now, but I could not go through a regular classroom. Like some of these, I give lots of credit to some of these students that can. I cannot do that. I'm a hands on. So I, I did make it. My line of work. I would love just, I have a lot of students that come in. I would love to see more science, math. And like, I think Pota Casey had a lot of I think we see it all, all around. All of his things that he wanted in a student is what we see in, in the hospital. So yeah, I think, I think we're right on track with, with what people are saying for sure.
Thanks. That's your feedback.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Rob or someone? So my next question, I guess, for you guys is Diane and Andy, for once, go first. Like, what, what did you guys think about it? Was it useful? Is it something you're gonna? Kind of a loaded question. It's something you're gonna take and try to implement. You know, that's
Not at all. That's not at all. That's our fear.
So I think it fits in right with where with NEAS, right? Which is the accreditation, New England Secretary of Schools. And which is going to be coming up in, in March and Kelly has learned that there's some work that what's supposed to be accomplished that still needs to be accomplished and go back. And some of that is the community as a whole needs to define what is appropriate for the graduate. And, and so it, it fits in with that whole thing because, you know, we always look for, we want all students to be college or career ready and or, you know, because not every kid is, is gonna take the same path. And we know that. And so I think it's really important that as a community, there needs to be that opportunity to kind of define what did that look like? And, and community is not one person. It's not only, it's not, it's not the board. It's, it's all of the community coming together and having those conversations. And so I think some of the work that needs to continue is smaller groups that don't feel so formal, where people feel comfortable to share. It's going to be important to be able to have that surveys, getting feedback from people. But it's also, I think, I think Kelly's pointed it out and David just spoke to it also. Is my experience has been that throughout the SU, we're very siloed with our different districts. And so what might be good for one district might not be good for another district or, or that's the opinion. And so that conversation of seven through twelve, while we're all one supervisory union and the majority of our students are going to go from our middle school to our high school. The conversation has not always happened backwards and forwards between the middle school and the high school. And in programming, in developing things. And so a professional, a personalized learning plan that's developed at the middle school shouldn't stop, whatever, whatever system is being used shouldn't stop and then start over again when they come up to the high school, right? Should be a continuing. My understanding is that doesn't happen. And so, so those are systems and they take time to fix. And things we need to put in place. And, and so that's going to be critical for those conversations. And we're really trying to design our professional learning days with our staffs to provide them those opportunities to have those conversations because they have it all the time. And so we really think those cross curricular, but also cross grade level conversations really need to happen. And that goes back to when we talk about porters of graduate, porters of graduates, not just the high school. Right? And, and, and that's always the focus. Oh, high school's got to get their porters of graduate. No, Wyndham Northeast needs to get their porters of graduate. And that's a pre K through twelve conversation. Because what we do with, with our, with our students in preschool and kindergarten is going to affect how they end up at the other end. And so it, it needs to be a whole conversation as opposed to very silent conversations. And I think that's going to be a key piece for us moving forward. A lot of the conversation and the work that, you know, Mike spearheaded and everything fits in with a lot of the things we've been able to uncover when we talk about credits and and whatnot and where the, the state of Vermont went away from credits and went to proficiency based learning. If you go on their website now, you can't find anything that talks about credits. On the AOE, it all is about proficiency based learning. And when I started talking with other SUs and SDs around the state, some of them wouldn't even report that they require any credits because they're moving to proficiency based learning. Now proficiency based graduation department's been around for a long time. So it's taken this much time for schools to start migrating to that and move away from those hybrid systems. Where you get credit and proficiency, right? And just moving to proficiency. And that takes a lot of packaging. We need to explain that for parents and for students. This is really hard to understand that we're all, we're all experts in school. We all went through school. So we all know what school should be. And what school experience will be for kids in the future and the current kids is very different from our experiences. And where we understand, you, we went to all school and we took algebra. Then when we finished algebra, we all took geometry. And when we get into geometry, we all took algebra two, right? Because it was a system that was in place, right? That is a system that is designed to put us into the industrialized factory. And so now those ways we go about doing it are very different and, and it's it's very confusing for a lot of people. So it takes a lot of unpacking. So that's going to be a lot of work. And I guess I'm saying this because I know it's going to take not just this year, when it's going to take multiple years of us developing this. We'll come with a nice, you know, neat package. Also, you got to do it along the way at the same time. So I have a question. Wait, I'm going to tell you. I'd like to see if anybody else has any questions for it. So I'm thinking when you're going to do that, that we need to have the board some sort of checkpoints as far as like check in, like how's it going? And stuff like that. That would be one. Then the second thing is, so say we have a new board, you know, six months, three months, whatever, ten, March, whatever that is. We have three or four new board members. How do we put a policy in place where the next board can't forget about this? Big policy?
I, I would, I would not recommend that make a policy around it. However, I think having some type of checking points of like, having Kelly develop a, some type of a plan for implementation so that you know, you can have expectations of when those pieces are coming. I mean, you currently have a policy that says how many credits a student has to pass to earn. And we uncovered that back in two thousand six, I believe, or five, two thousand five. When that policy went into play. And so, you know, you want to have whatever system we have, if we, we make a choice to say, maybe you don't need as many courses. Let's say we didn't work credit. You don't, you don't need as many courses to graduate or proficiencies. We don't want to just all of a sudden say, okay, let's cut it off now and, you know, we got to have a step down. Just as you step into your higher credits, you want to step down and, and look at that. So I, I do think having Kelly and her team develop a kind of timeline would be very, and have you adopt. So if you want future boards, have you adopt that timeline of, of implementation would be appropriate because then that would be a legacy.
I'm interested to say there. Because we're going to try to do that with the building and grounds as well. You know, put something in place so that, you know, we're going to spend all this money, you know, the next board, you know, might be like, yeah. We want to go this way. It's that. Anyway, we're trying to, trying to fix things permanently.
Start over every year.
So I, I think that's, you make a good point. I think for us as a current board, we want to make sure that we're making decisions that are impacting us next year, three years, five years. So that future boards and future administration, you know, whatever, is taking that and, and continuing moving down the road. I think what happens sometimes is we make knee jerk reactions and then we become reactionary to these quick decisions. I think to Andy's point in terms of silos, whether it be in the community, whether it be within the district, I'm not sure. But I really feel like, given the heavy lifting and, and Mike, I appreciate all the work that you've done on it. I really feel like having the data there, having viewpoints and then really similar to going to ground, setting up a plan so that, yeah, future boards can change things that they want to. But if there's a rationale and a plan in place that has the key participants in it, it's going to be really hard to unpack in a, in a negative way, if that makes sense.
That would make a lot of sense. I appreciate that. So Tara, I hope you got that legacy timeline adoption for the minutes. Thank you, Bear. Anybody else? Mike?
I just, oh, all right. Andy, you, you, in some of the notes you've released today, you said you were making a recommendation to the board or a suggestion to the board that we suggest to you, the administration, that we establish a task force to attack this issue. So I didn't know what you had in mind specifically. Was that something to include board members on that task force? When I hear the task force, I usually think that's where concepts go to die. So
Well, I did not mean to say that.
No, I know. Tongue in cheek. But what did you have in mind in terms of what kind of a task force could we establish to keep this going? Because I, I see this as a, this is not just a one snapshot. Take a look. This is continuous improvement. Maybe we're doing a lot, a lot of great stuff in these areas already, but that doesn't mean we can't do better. So it's just part of continuous improvement. And so input, you know, digest the data, move forward, rinse and repeat. I mean, that's, that's just part of, so what did you have in mind in terms of that suggestion?
So, so, thank you, Mike. I mean, just like we talked about with the capital improvement plan and I talked with other principals, they're not plans that a principal does all by themselves sitting in their office one day. It, it requires all stakeholders. You need representation. So you need a board, you know, you should have a board member on there because that's a representation of that, of that piece. And you need community members, you need parents, you need students, you need teachers, and you need administration and everyone coming together. And, and I think with the high school, with this conversation, you're going to need at times, you know, representation from the career centers and, and to have those conversations. But so, so when I'm referring to a task force, it's a, it's a committee of stakeholders that is, is looking at building that. And typically a, a lot of that work is done, like when we do NEAS every ten years. So I'm not sure, you know, the process has followed here in the past, but but I know that in other schools, when I was building administration, administrator, and I can remember when proficiency first came on board, how much time I spent in committee walking through a lot of this stuff with, when we brought, you know, like I said, we did that kind of a thing where we brought it all in and then we made a presentation and a proposal for how we do it as opposed to people thinking, you know, you know, pointing the finger, it's, it's Rob's fault that this happened, right? Or it's, you know, it's Kelly's fault that it's a consensus that comes together. You draw on data, you look at this, this new data point that we didn't even know existed, where you were very excited about, like the what is BSEC, you know? So things like that are really important for us to draw on and for that group to look at, to make those recommendations. And, you know, we I can remember we talked about, you know, fiscal literacy, right? And, and it's important that fiscal literacy is important. And you know, is that something that we want to incorporate or not incorporate? And if, does it take does it replace one of our traditional math courses? Or is it an add on of a, you know, a math course? And, and just you know, we, the, the back and forth arguing around it at, at this table or in, or in water coolers and stuff like that doesn't get it done. But if a collective group comes together.
Is this the advisory council that you're talking?
No, that's
Oh, that's totally separate. Okay.
All of that. So this, this is something I'm saying that I know is worth the building.
Yeah. I mean, going back to your question about take away. So again, thank you. I think some of the key things I took away, one is I know the language of equity can be really politicized, but I think this exercise, I think, was a really important one for the community and for the board, right? That it really set fair unique needs that some students and families in our communities have, right? To be successful. And I hope that that lens, right, of equity and being open to different people needing different things to be successful continues. So I just want to accept that. I think that's really important. I think the other thing that's really important, right, is that the, the kind of premise or concept of voice and choice, right? How important it is for students to have voice and choice, right, to longer continuum. And then we continue to provide or increasingly provide, right, the more robust options for our students. You know, it's really interesting. When I looked at the RBTC climate data, for example, I looked at it with, with a selective envy, right? When you look at how students are experiencing their climate in that building. It's, it's light years beyond where we currently are and where we have been for some time. And then I'm of the opinion, and I think data and research would support this, that students, when they're happy, when they're seen, when they feel a sense of belonging, when they're getting what they need, right? Everybody wins, right? And so I, I just, again, it's that voice and choice piece that I think is really critical. Again, that student voice in particular in the PLP process. So we need to do a better job of estate and centering student wishes. And the last thing is just really that the, the role of the environment, right? Like continuing to approach things from the lens of collective responsibility that sometimes we, our systems, our beliefs, our policies are part of the problem, right? And so I share and we'll need for that to continue, you know, so we need to continue to center that. So, um, thank you. So, yeah.
Any questions for Doug?
No question, but can I propose that we task the administration with a task force to follow all of this?
It is currently not an agenda item, so I think that would be
Four PCBs or out?
So Andy gave some good board advice. I think the consensus of the board is to to do a task force. And then how, how would that look? Do you just, who picks it? Do you pick on the board or what?
Why? I think John would be part of Kelly's putting that
I think John would be part of Kelly's putting that together, how she would. What she would see, that, you know, like invite people, you don't. You wanna invite people first typically, um, then you volunteer people. Um, or volunteer people, uh, volunteer, um, you know, um. But typically, you wanna, you wanna give people that opportunity. You know, you don't wanna, um, say to, you know. Pick like, well, June, we got you on that. It feels like I got too much, much late, I'm not doing it, then. That feels awful.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, probably. I think just one other thing, and I I think we all, you know, we all want things done quickly. Uh, in a time, you know, in a timestamp or time-sensitive way. And, um, for me. Feel like. This board has done some heavy lifting, and I would love to see that continued. But I also feel like, um. The work is also just starting. I've been, I've seen. Dean of students now that we have in the middle school and we have in the high school. So there's, I think, collaboration going. I talked to, uh, is that a game tonight? And the band directors working with. The central school working with the middle school. So you're starting, and I don't know if that's through Kelly's leadership or if that's just a natural flow. But you're starting to see additional conversations and I feel. Excited that we're not starting when they're entering this building in ninth grade, but there's a full plan in place. Starting in seventh grade. And I feel like. We all want things quicker, but I think if we wanna do it right, and I think times change, technology changes. Uh, we wanna make sure everyone that leaves this building, I call it a rising tide raises all ships. We ought to elevate everything. So it's those. Those college kids that are going through and the ones that are going into career centers, we want them all to be successful. What does that look like then? I don't have that answer. And so I think running through some of these exercises and having this dialogue is extremely important. In addition to continuing having a community feedback.
Great. Thanks, Rob. Appreciate that. Priscilla, anything?
Save it for directors.
Okay. All right, um, next up, uh, we're in one, it's a unfinished whole business. We don't have anything there. Um, and may a director's comments. So, go ahead.
Start with someone else.
Right. Rob?
I'm good.
I'm all set, thank you.
Smoke enough today.
Tom?
I'm all set.
David?
I believe that we have, um, budget meeting Thursday. Is the hour three o'clock, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, Zoom world. Uh, Bellows Falls Union High School Budget Committee meets Thursday, three o'clock here. Uh, we invite your participation. Um, I'm not sure if Zoom will be going or not, but that might be another way to, uh, get. Uh, the two items that that I I have on my mental agenda here, Kelly, are, um. A look at Jim Vazina's object-based budget, was that correct, Mike? And also I believe we're looking for what I informally, informally refer to as the McCollum. Grid from which I hope we'll be able to have a look at, maybe discuss a little bit. Um. Apart from that, I suppose that we can always entertain. Um, adjustments to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. So one more time, uh, three o'clock, I believe that's twenty-sixth, am I correct?
Uh, twenty-sixth.
What's day, Kelly?
Twenty-sixth.
Okay, okay. Three o'clock Wednesday, uh, October twenty-sixth, budget.
Thursday.
Thank you. Three o'clock Thursday, Thursday, um, October twenty-sixth, here at B F U H S. A comment.
Thank you, David.
So.
Yeah, congratulations to David.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um. It it amazes me to sit here and hear the idea that. A lot of these things are just totally new when I think back to when I taught here. Entirely two thousand seventeen, and a lot of these things just seem to have been here. At that time. One thing that is, is some special needs students stay until they're through their twenty-first year. So they're building skills all that time. They're certainly in a flexible pathway. Um. Also, I heard Cotes and I heard Heather both talk about students needing more skills. Theory of pride is always required stepping up. And setting high standards. I certainly don't wanna see our high, our high standards going down at all as as we do more of this skill-based. Proficiencies and working on that. Yes, the proficiencies are within courses. If we cut courses, we're gonna get less skills, less proficiency. Do we wanna, I asked you, do we wanna lower standards? Or or make students rise to the level of achieving those skills? Being there, working on those skills, developing them so that they really can have our career or belong to college. The, um. We don't have periods. We have. A what kind of system?
Block.
Block system. Within the block, you can do. Instruction. You can do projects so that you're working on them. You can do getting the students ready, those students that. Don't take it home and don't do their work. Therefore, you have all of that kind of incorporated there. So I. That's why that always worked for me. It also allows the teachers to have less students through the day, uh, as far as the total students. Yes, you can put more in the classes. Keep in mind that. Uh, C C V limits theirs to eighteen, and what we asked. K to twelve solutions to do was to do an average of twenty. So I'm. A little uncomfortable with that number personally, but that's up to administration to work on. Um, the art room could only have fifteen in it to be safe at the time when I was here, so I don't know if that's changed. We have independent studies. We have flex pathways. We have recovery programs to help with those skills so that if a student doesn't make it. But I certainly don't wanna lower our standards for one or two students that are not making it. There's a man up there that did a huge program on just saying not lowering it, and I can't think of his. Name or life on me at the moment. But I will be for the next meeting. Um, he did a song that went along with it too, so I'll find that. As Andy said, we're looking at Miasca accreditation. I'm. Really interested in how that will come out because I think they set our standards higher, and I think we need to set our standards higher, even if we had to. Increase our skill levels and the things we need. The information we got was wonderful. Don't get me wrong. It's deeply appreciated. It is important to realize, though, that it. It was not a committee that set up all those different things. It was one person from our board. Um, although we had started with the committee. It is, it seemed to be geared to those students. Sixty percent of our students, Andy has told us in budget meeting or more. Go on for some kind of increased education, increased training, increased stuff. So all of the things that we've heard are geared to. Less than, uh, less than half of our students. So. We didn't ever really address the academic students because I guess. Um, it was felt that maybe we have the programs for them, but I think we need to keep that in mind and remember that we can't. Cut back on those things. We just need to add and do better for all students. Um. It would have been nice to improve a little more on those. I don't know why it didn't happen. Um, it seemed like kind of more of a narrower focus than what I was hoping to hear from all of that. Although, like I said, the information was was good. Um. We've mentioned going back and forth. Um, music has always done elementary, middle and high school as far back as I know. I think COVID kind of set us back a little, but. It's always done that. Uh, special ed in particular, I know when I was here. I started working with seventh grade students before they got here. So I did seventh grade, eighth grade. And what was going to be expected of them when they got here. So maybe special ed was a little further ahead, I don't know. But I do think our freshman academy stuff where they reached out and they brought them up and all of that interaction did help. Um. A few years ago. When, back when I was here, we had a committee. Or a community breakfast with the. Uh, principal, the board, and committeeing members, and it's teacher rep. That met once a month. We've done a lot accomplished. We heard from people. We heard from them on a regular basis. I would love to see that happen again. Um, and to sum it up. Our. Football team made playoffs and they're playing here. I think it's now scheduled for Friday night. Hopefully that gives you lots to think about. Thanks.
Thank you. So, um, just have a couple of quick things. Um, I think it was a productive meeting. I think we have, uh, some direction on. What we need to do next, um, as far as buildings grounds and, um. You know, the portrait of the graduate. Uh, I'd like to give a shout out. We're talking about seven through twelve. I'd give a shout out to our Connor, our athletic director. Um, I don't ever recall having eighth graders play up. And I guarantee you that that is excellent. I know it's excellent for those kids that are playing up, but they're only gonna get better. As they get older. And I wish we had done that. For a long time, especially a few years back on a personal level. Um. And I I think he's doing a great job. So Kelly, uh, you know, thank you for, uh, making that happen. Um, I think it's just a a great thing. And they, you know, again, athletics, you learn a lot of stuff. Um, and and I'm a huge fan of, uh. Um, if you set the bar to a certain level. I think kids will hit it, whatever that level is. Um, so if you set your standards high and everything. They're going to hit it. I think kids will always. Surprise us in a great way. And, uh, one thing that Andy, uh, two words he is, uh, taught me is rigor and relevance. So that's what my expectation is for students in this school. Uh, make it a challenge and make it relevant to the world. So that's it. I, uh. I was being adjourned at seven twenty-two.
Agenda items? For next meeting, because I'd like you to put on D twenty-two and D twenty-three for policies.
Sure. Did you email them to me, Priscilla?
Yeah, they're the library materials and the, um, instructional materials. For some reason, they got off. He got left off the high school.
Yes, because I I didn't know about it. So, so I do send out.
Here we go.
Thank you. Um, thank you. Uh, next meeting is, um, we have the budget meeting and I. This is the second. One day in November is our next, uh, high school meeting. Third one. Thank you. All right.
Rob, just real quick. I know we we mentioned football, but soccer, girls soccer had a huge overtime playing victory today. Uh, so I think we need to recognize that as well.
I know that. Way to go soccer. All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV. Keeping government honest.